...to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 26, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir, ladies and gentlemen. We have four additional items to add to tonight's work session agenda. And they are in front of you. One is a letter that we got from VDOT. The second is a matter that deals with the Railroad Museum. The third is a briefing on the governor's amendments to the Transportation Bill. And the next, the last one, is a letter that we received today from an attorney pertaining to solid waste recycling. The first item on the work session agenda, pension bonds. And if you would look at this, this is a calendar for what lies ahead. It's a one-page, has the four calendar months, March through June. You'll set tonight, the public hearing that's required under the Virginia Public Finance Act, you'll set the public hearing by motion, we're asking you to do that, for your April 23 council meeting. As you can see, we'll be doing work between now and then to get ready to get our bond rating from the bond rating agencies in New York. And that trip will most likely take place in May. We're scheduling to sell the bonds the first of June, the first week or so in June, and close by June 27. So this is the schedule for what lies ahead. Again, the action that we recommend that you take tonight is to establish the public hearing for April 23. Any questions?
No.
Okay. The next item is a briefing on stormwater. And, yes ma'am?
This is just for the 80%? Not for the offset?
Oh, it is.
It doesn't include those.
There is 150 plus the 25.
And where we are too, remember, the pension obligation bonds are taxable bonds, okay? We'll have a need to go to the bond market for tax-free bonds, the traditional capital improvements projects. And we're working with, that would be what you'd be doing anyway next year, the order of magnitude is 50.
And that's to take out the bond anticipation notes we already do for the courts?
Did you get that? That's to take out the bond anticipation notes that we already have done for the court? Issue what's called bands, and you anticipate going to the market. Now it's time to go to the market. So what will end up is two components in this sale. The component that will be taxable will be the pension bonds. And then the component that will be general obligation bonds, the typical bonds that we issue, will be for the courthouse. Now putting them together in one sale event will save us money. We'll get two different interest rates, but it'll save us money on closing, administrative costs, attorney fees, all the things that are necessary in order to move something like this to the market. So this has the potential of being a pretty significant sale. You take the 175, which is the not to exceed number that covers our 80% plus the offset, and then the 50 million for the debt we've already incurred on the courthouse, we're talking about $225 million. That's not a shocker to the market, but it's going to be a nice sale. Remember too, that Hampton Roads Sanitation District, the day that we went to the market in December, had a $350 million issue. So that gives you some scale. So thank you for your work on this matter and for setting the public hearing so we can keep this on track. This is a big deal. Stormwater briefing. We touched on stormwater last night as we discussed one item on your work session agenda. You've been receiving briefings from staff about the efforts to clean up Chesapeake Bay and the tributaries that feed into the Chesapeake Bay. And by doing that, cleaning up the river, you've got to clean up what goes into the river. And that's primarily stormwater for us. And this effort that starts at the national level and comes down to the state level has its big impact here at the local level. So it means that we'll have to adopt a new ordinance pertaining to stormwater and stormwater quality and management. It's going to add time to the development process, and it's going to add cost to the development process. And by that I mean, the person that wants to do something new in any locality in Hampton Roads are going to be facing additional cost as it relates to cleaning up the stormwater that runs off of that development. So there are going to be new requirements. As we look at stormwater, visualize if I had a glass water right here. If I poured it on this surface, because it's flat, it's going to stay there until it evaporates. Unlike Roanoke, Stanton, Lexington, that's got hills, the stormwater runs off to the lowest point. And we talked about flooding last night. So this gives us a chance to combine not only this stormwater quality aspect that we'll be talking about tonight, but refresh our memories about what we do as it relate to try to mitigate flooding in Portsmouth. We're flat. And if you have the right combination of a nor'easter, a strong wind, and a high tide, we're going to have water. And because we're flat, it's going to stay there for a period of time. Cities size their drainage system for particular storm event. And ours is geared for that storm that comes once every 10 years. And so that's the sized pipe. You figure out you're going to get that much rain from a 10-year storm, so you size your pipe accordingly. Now, we made that decision within the last two decades or so. Prior to that was the five-year storm. So that's an even smaller pipe. So we've got about half of our city sized for the five-year storm and half for the 10-year storm. And there are all sorts of ways that people try to accommodate that big rain event. You know, if you're trying to size your drainage system for the once-in-a-hundred-year storm or once-in-a-two-hundred-year storm, that's a rare event. It means you're getting a lot of rain. You're going to be talking about a great, great big pipe. And so if you've ever been to a shopping mall and noticed the parking lot, and notice that it's concave, right at the apex of that concave is the yard drain for the parking lot. And what the developers decided is that we're going to let our customers get wet from their shoe rolls up to their ankles if we have a big rain event. We'll just create a pond if we have a big rain event, and let that drain just take that water away on a gradual basis. So it's what you do, you make trade-offs. You decide, I can live with a little bit of water to avoid putting a great big pipe in the ground that's going to cost a lot of money. So typically, you size it for, in our case, a 10-year storm. But we need to tell you about what lies ahead with water quality. And James Wright, our, oh, by the way, if I may take a timeout, I am so proud to announce, hope I can keep this straight, some great appointments. We have a new director of Parks Recreation and Leisure Services, Margaret Thorne. Margaret, will you stand up, please? We have a new director of Public Works, Youssef.
Yes.
Will you stand up? A new director of...
General Services.
General Services, I want to say Management Services. Will you stand up, Dennis? And somebody that I really wanted to get back from day one, and I had arm wrestle Jackie Scott for Roslyn. Roslyn is our manager of Management Services. She was with Management Services when I was here as a deputy. She is really great. In fact, all of them are great. They have a passion for what they do. They have a passion for this city. And I'm very proud to be part of their team. All right. So James is going to tell you about what lies ahead in the way of water flooding. Thank you, James.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight's briefing purpose on stormwater is to provide City Council with an update on how federal and state regulations are impacting stormwater management. I'd like to start by reading the mission statement from the City of Portsmouth Stormwater Management Department, Division. The City of Portsmouth Stormwater Management Program is designed to safely and efficiently control runoff, protect public health and safety, protect property, minimize the discharge of pollutants to receiving waters, guide development, and protect and enhance water quality and streams and stormwater lakes in the community. Get into a little bit of history of our stormwater permit. The City of Portsmouth has a federal stormwater permit that governs its discharges into the waters of the U.S. Prior to 1992, what we had to go off of was the Clean Water Act. The Clean Water Act established protocols and guidelines to actually develop and manage the stormwater programs and to control source pollution throughout the state. At that point in the city's history, stormwater was part of the general fund. It was not a separate entity. There was very little staff and very little funding to do some of the operational things that we do today. So maintenance was, I dare to say, lacking at that time. In 1992, we established a stormwater utility as a special revenue fund. One of the primary drivers for that was the regulations that we had to follow to get the federal permit. And as you can see, we started our permitting application process in the mid-1990s. I think the associated cost related to that permit application was somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000. We received our federal stormwater permit in 1996, and at that time, we modified our stormwater utility to its current format. Current format is based off of an equivalent residential unit, which is equivalent to 1,877 square feet. Basically, one residence is equal to one ERU. That is basically an ERU per month, and it's billed quarterly, and you see that on your real estate taxes. The city has just under 68,000 ERUs. So if you take, say, 50 cents, as far as the stormwater utility, that generates approximately $400,000 that you can use towards any of your stormwater maintenance needs. The current focus since the late 1990s or early 2000s has been on the Chesapeake Bay. And more recently, we've seen Executive Order 13508 driving the efforts to restore and protect the bay. Prior to that, most federal laws were based on the Clean Water Act of 1972, and the state regulations were based on the Virginia Water Control Law of 1946. What this has created is that the EPA is now using a more strict interpretation of existing laws and also of the new regulations. Whereas prior to these new mandates and laws, they were willing to work with municipalities and different entities within the state to improve their programs. They are taking a more of a hard-line approach, whereas things used to be done to say the maximum extent practicable. Now they're saying, setting specific limits that you have to adhere to, and they're saying funding is not a good enough reason that you can't adhere to these regulations. And as you may have seen, if you've had a chance to take a look at the memo that went out to you about the current trend in EPA enforcement across the state as far as our annual, well, permit inspections go. Okay, so now we're going to talk a little bit about the City of Portsmouth Stormwater Program. Like I mentioned before, we have a federal stormwater permit that's administered by the state. When we first got the permit, it was administered by DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality. It is now administered by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. Current regulations are now moving that program back into DEQ. When we first got our permit, we were considered a Phase 1 community. That means we had a population of over 100,000 people. Phase 2 communities also have a permit, but their permits are based on six minimum controls, where ours have those minimum controls, but they're also to more specific items that we have to address. Some examples of Phase 2 communities are Suffolk, Jame City Counties, and other populations with under 100,000 people. Also included in the group that has to get Phase 2 permits are VDOT, DoD facilities, colleges, and industrial facilities also have to get their own specific kind of stormwater permit. Just to go over some of the program components, operations and maintenance, that includes street sweeping, cave-in repairs, ditch maintenance, pipe cleaning and rehab, and various and sundry small projects, which we'll give an example of later on in the presentation. Public education and outreach, we're members of the PDC, so we're heavily involved in Ask HR Green. We do presentations for civic schools. We have a medallion project where we go out and mark storm drain basins. And we've installed several pet waste stations in the past 18 months or so. Illicit discharge detection and elimination, which is basically our summertime water quality monitoring, construction site runoff control, our erosion and sediment control program, post-construction runoff control, BNP inspections. Good housekeeping and pollution prevention is mainly geared towards our quarterly municipal yard inspections. And there are several challenges that stormwater faces over the next 18 months. The first of which is the stormwater permit renewal. The City of Portsmouth, as well as all other municipalities in the state of Virginia, has been under an administrative permit since the early 2000s. The EPA and the state could not reach an agreement on certain permit language. Therefore, the rest of the state is basically allowed to continue under their current permits that they had at the time, and make concessions to agree whichever regulations came out in the interim. Our new stormwater permit renewal will require us to meet the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, which is the total maximum daily load, and other TMDLs within our MS4 boundaries. The MS4 is a municipal, separate storm sewer system. It's basically the city's drainage system, which consists of pipes, basins, ditches, outfalls, and the like. Our MS4 boundary basically includes all facilities within our boundaries that say aren't federal, near the war, that is, federal or another entity. And I listed those facilities here. Crane Island, the Naval Medical Center, Coast Guard Base, shipyard, and the marine terminals. As Mr. Rowe mentioned, Virginia's come out with new state stormwater regulations, and will have to adopt a new state program. So our new permit will make us, have specific requirements for us to comply with those regulations. There'll be more stringent rules for municipal facilities and operations, as well as an increased emphasis on public education and outreach. Okay, the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. TMDL is basically a pollution diet that basically identifies the maximum amount of a pollutant that a waterway can handle. The Chesapeake Bay TMDL involves the bay states, Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, New York, and the District of Columbia. This targets three main nutrients, and those are sediment, phosphorus, and nitrogen. A TMDL may involve other nutrients such as bacteria and chlorophyll A, but specifically for the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, these are the three that this TMDL focuses on. There are multiple sectors and stakeholders involved in this process. It not only affects stormwater, it affects wastewater, agriculture, and four other sectors. Stakeholders involved, municipalities, PDCs, VDOT, DoD, colleges, and any other entity that may be required to get a permit, a new stormwater permit around the Commonwealth. We say this is an unfunded mandate. The PDC estimates that for the City of Portsmouth alone to comply with its TMDL requirements on the, I guess the generous side, would be $165 million. For the region, for the region, it's 2.5 billion. If done the way EPA would mandate you to do it, instead of going with the preferred state model, that cost would be four times as much. And there are flaws with the model that they use to assign the loads, a couple of which you see here. There's insufficient use of local data as far as land use, which they use to predict the loads and set the loads, and insufficient, I guess, accounting of the amount of actual BNP's that we have on the ground. Another issue is that our region, we've been dealing with Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area for some time now, and so we do have some water quality BNP's out there, and we're not receiving full credit for those.
That's one of the biggest discussions at the PDC. Our chairman, Tom Shepherd, from, where is he, York County?
York County.
And trying to get EPA and someone to give us some information, because the clock is still ticking, and we're being held accountable to those standards that, as you said, the data, the input data didn't recognize a lot of the credits that we already have. So I don't know where we are with that. I think we sent a letter off last month asking one more time, hey, as a PDC, all 16 jurisdictions, we need some guidance in this area. So we just march into what the orders are now, even though we know they're erroneous?
Correct. We're actually working with the PDC and a couple of other, the larger communities, the Phase 1 communities, to actually, I think, to put out an RFP so that we can actually get some of this data and actually see what it looks like on our own, to be able to present that to the EPA. Back when we did our WIP II Semitale, Wardshed Implementation Plan Semitale, about a year ago, one of the things that they asked us for was updated data on land use, updated data on BNP's, and any other more current data so that they could use that in the model. We went through the process, submitted it as a city, submitted it as a region, didn't get it included in the model.
Yeah. So as of right now, that model doesn't include any BNP's anywhere?
It does include BNP's, but the information that it has isn't accurate.
Isn't it? Okay.
And so they're saying that the next run of the model, I think it's in 2017, is when they'll bring all of that information in to the model. We would like to get it in sooner rather than later.
See what the differential is.
The next big thing on the horizon is the new state stormwater regulations. State law says that it should be enacted this year, 2013, but there is a provision in the state law that allows us to actually delay that adoption until July 1, 2014. As part of the new stormwater regulations, there is an integration bill which integrates the stormwater program, the erosion and sediment control program, and the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area District Program at the state level under the stormwater program. This resulted in a realignment of their staff and elimination of the Chesapeake Bay Local Assistance Division. As Mr. Rowe mentioned before, we'll have to adopt a new state, a new actually stormwater ordinance. The state's provided a model ordinance in draft form. We are working to tailor that so that it fits Portsmouth and not just have something that's out there just that the state gets, it's something that works for us, but meets their criteria. Their new stormwater design criteria, the BNP's will now be required for volume reduction as well as pollutant removal along that same line. All development will have water quality criteria. And that target nutrient that you're looking to reduce is phosphorus. So if you have a new development or redevelopment, it doesn't matter when you come into the city. Once the new program's in effect, you're going to have to, you've got to treat both volume and quality. So your site's going to look a lot different next year than it would today. And just to draw an example, the Kroger site is actually a grandfathered site. If that site were not grandfathered, and they came in July 1, 2014, the huge parking lot wouldn't be there. Some of the things that they may have to do to actually treat stormwater may actually take a parcel. So that just gives you an idea of the magnitude of so many things you're looking at when you're looking at some of these sites. Another part of the new state stormwater regulations is that we will now be required to administer the state general construction permit. It's currently being administered by DCR. It's a federal permit, so the state, and through this process, it's their opinion that since these activities are happening within our borders, we would have better control over how to make developers and whoever else comply with the regulations. So basically, the program that they used to administer, they're dumping it in our lap.
Unfunded mandate? Any money coming with that?
They set fees, developer fees, as part of this program, what they recommend, 28% of which go to the state to just check a box and say, you've done what you're supposed to do as far as reviewing the plan or whatever. Give me my cash, thank you. We're not so sure that the fees that they're setting are worth it. If, once we get, once we get into the process, we'd like to evaluate what actual cost is and adjust other fees. We don't want to add it to this fee, reason being because there's so much tracking involved in this. You have to justify every penny spent if you're going to attach it to this fee. No one person in the city does one thing. And so if you're taking a stormwater call and you have to put the phone down and go do something else, you have to track that time, stop, come back, pick back up, and track that. And this is how you have to track those expenditures to justify fees for this program, which is, as a staff, we've decided not to do it this time, and just let them collect the state portion of that fee. And so we're going to call it a state fee when people come to get their permit. And as Mr. Rowe mentioned prior to, there's going to be a significant impact on development and plan review. It's going to cost more to do business, your sites are going to look different, and it's going to take more time for projects, being both at staff level as far as review and at the design level as far as some of the engineers, because some of the guidance that the state's given, development, community, and municipal agencies haven't received all the information they need to actually enact the program if we had to do it come July.
But we're on a level playing field with everybody else.
Correct.
As far as all these regulations.
Correct. Okay, some additional challenges, and I'm just listing them here. As far as our operational facilities, we already mentioned yard inspections. There's going to be an increased frequency of yard inspections, and it's going to change also some of the things you're looking for when you do your yard inspections, as far as certain items placed near drainage structures. You're not looking for a source of pollution, you're looking for a potential source of pollution. So now you're looking at both of these when you go to do an inspection.
But that creates greater accountability, because it gives you a steady chart, and you can see the rising and the decline if you look at it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right.
Golf courses and parks, we're going to have to create nutrient management plans for these facilities and ask them to adhere to them. So basically, tell them what kind of fertilizer they need and when they can put it down, how much to put down, things of that nature. As far as staff, we're going to have to go through and re-verify all of our assets. As far as staff, we're gonna have to go through and re-verify all of our assets, re-document and change some of our SOPs, do additional training. There's gonna be increased inspections, monitoring, and reporting for anyone involved that touches the stormwater program. And there's gonna be increased requirements for public education and outreach. One of the other challenges, what I mentioned a little bit before, is ability of the state to provide timely guidance. They've had some attrition, some redistribution of staff. I mentioned there's the turnover of the stormwater program from DCR to DEQ at the PDC. We're trying to figure out now, is DCR's interpretation of what this piece of the regulation means gonna be the same as DEQ's once the program goes over. These are some of the challenges that we're going through at the moment. And get back to the lack of adequate funding. You mentioned the unfunded mandate. You saw the levels that it would cost the city, potentially, in the best-case scenario, if you wanna call that a best-case scenario, 165 million. The state recently approved in this year's General Assembly, $35 million package for stormwater. And that 35 million is spread throughout the entire Commonwealth. So, that just gives you an idea of that issue. You see now listed some of our, these are, some of these are old, some of these are annual, some are new with stormwater and flood control projects. As you see up top, we spend just over $2 million annually in routine maintenance, as you can see with the street sweeping, the drainpipe cleaning and rehab, and the cave-in repairs. Each one of these has different components. As you go through, the seawall replacement had tide gates involved and raising the wall for flood control, keeping water from coming over Crawford and going down Dinwiddie. You see some smaller projects specifically for specific hotspots like Cherokee Road drainage improvements over by the post office to alleviate some of that flooding over there. And then you see the larger neighborhood projects like North Truxton and Brighton, where we actually went in and did a whole blocks of neighborhoods and did actual drainage and utilities. The drainage component of those projects is anywhere in magnitude of 60, 60 to 50%, with the rest of that being utilities.
These are in, other than the annual ones, are they in various states of all these? How many is it complete?
Everyone up here is complete, except for the current phase of Brighton and the downtown Mass Utility Project.
But they have two components, like, like you said, they take away stormwater, but they also help us to mitigate the flooding. And you can see, they, they go from big to small, small to big.
Yeah, some of them still have significant flooding, that's why I'm asking where we are, so.
What's the Warfield Canal? It is a cobbler banner, if you get to the city limits right before the railroad tracks. That goes behind the houses and comes out at Roosevelt.
What was that, what was your question? What was that you asked?
Warfield Canal.
Oh, okay.
Here, out there, right off the canal.
So, on the, on the, not on the block you're down, but on the Ebony Heights one, that's, that's a completed project?
That was Phase 1 of the project.
Phase 1?
Most of these, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. So, so we have, how many phases is there?
We've completed one phase. Phasing depends on funding. The more money you have, the more you can do in a phase.
We did just enough to make 'em mad.
Well, it's still flooding.
It's still flooding.
And just specifically to Ebony Heights, there was some leftover funding in the portion of Ebony Heights over by the pump station, either with the town, or the townhome flood.
Yeah.
We're actually working with a firm to identify some spots in the system that we might be able to improve, not saying we'll get rid of the flooding, or we're looking to try to minimize some of that. So, we are actually working in Ebony Heights with some of the funding that was left over.
Yeah, 'cause water sits back there in that park area really, really, really bad. And after it rains, even, even when the sun comes back, it's unusable for, for days because it's just wet, you know? So, okay, I don't mean the block you're down, go ahead.
That's fine.
That's an interesting area, because the way it flows, it actually flows north.
And with 164 cut it off, as we discussed.
So, 164 didn't do us any favors when that was built.
Yeah.
And so, Phase 1 became an interesting engineering project when that was done.
It created more of a pond.
Yes, ma'am.
It really did.
On the south side of 164.
That's right.
But we put that up there, because if someone wants, if someone asks you, what are you doing in the way of eliminating flooding? You're doing a lot. You've got a lot of skin in the game. You made a big commitment to this.
But was there, was there a total on that sheet?
No, sir, there was not a total of this sheet.
You can see that. It's a really big number.
Yeah.
This is just a snapshot.
Yeah, that's, that's not everything that you've done. And, you know, street sweeping doesn't sound like a lot, but if you've got a drop inlet that stopped up, guess what? When it rains, you're gonna have ponding, you're gonna have flooding. And so, this is really important. Prior to 1992, when the cave-in was done, you threw stuff in there to, to fill in the hole. Now, they go make sure that the pipe is not clogged up, not full of debris, because it's, we want that system to take away the water.
We had a little medallion project, and I know some of the neighborhoods, I know like West Park View, took it upon themselves as a community project to, to put those medallions on the storm drains and all with, you know, with the Correct. Help of the city staff, but they actually did the work. Are we trying to, I mean, that's something communities can do and Yeah. Help the city and help themselves. Yeah, the interns in, in Public Works Stormwater Division, they've gone out to schools, garden clubs, and civic leagues, and so various groups have been requesting to actually put these medallions down. What they do is they get with the interns, tell them where they wanna work, and we give, and we print out a map showing them the appropriate locations of where we want these medallions to go. We count up the medallions and then get with the groups and work on getting them installed. And so, it seems to be a pretty profitable program at the moment.
I noticed that we've done quite well on that corridor of Elliott and where McGlean intersect near TCC, and there's a church there, Agape Baptist Church. Down that area is not flooding as much as it used to. I noticed a lot of work. But however, going down Elliott, going toward De Creek Boulevard, I noticed that there's still some flooding down there and a lot of ditches in that area as well. Are we gonna do anything in that area to help those folk out in that area?
Highland-Biltmore is one of the four neighborhoods that were, that were in the CIP for neighborhood improvements, drainage that you speak of.
Part of the rotation.
They've, they've, yeah, part of the rotation, rotates from one neighborhood to the next. They've done two phases in that neighborhood. So, as we continue to get funding, we continue to move down that street. What we've done is we've piped in at least along Elliott with some larger pipes and backup off of Elliott with some smaller pipes, with the eventual thought that maybe at some point in time in the future, you may come back and do something significant to the road as far as curving or sidewalk. Specifically, when you go in with these first phases, you're taking care of the drainage and the water, so you want to get the water, water moving, and you wanna make sure the utilities are upgraded.
But one of the things I think we need to be cautious of, because we've seen it happen, when new development comes through, a lot of times, we don't, we aren't far sighted enough to tie it in with the impact of what it may have on the existing communities, because we've seen a lot of that happen, as we looked at the development of Tyewater Community College through the old academy park, and the impact that has hit on some of the Highland-Biltmore areas. So, we have to bring all those things together, because I've had to walk over there through the ditches when I was at Highland-Biltmore School. And, and I'm noticing that unless we do some preventive measures to some of those areas before we start turning up some others, we create some problems that we aren't quite ready for. We need to be cautious about that.
Okay, next steps. Staff is currently completing our request to the Commonwealth to extend, to be able to extend to July 1, 2014, the implementation of the new state stormwater program. We're also currently working to provide comments on the Arlington County Phase 1 MS4 permit. That is the first Phase 1 community stormwater permit that will come out, and we've been told that's gonna be a template for all the permits to follow. So, if we have issues with that permit, we need to make them known now rather than wait until we get our permit. Permit here, here shortly. We have to adopt the new stormwater ordinance, and we have to negotiate our new stormwater action permit when it comes, when it comes our time. When I say negotiate, we wanna, wanna get a permit that's both reasonable and achievable. And we need to provide training on the new stormwater requirements, not only staff, but also to developers and any commissioners that might touch the stormwater program and have to make decisions based on some of these new laws and regulations. And lastly, we have to implement the new state stormwater program and continue to focus on maintenance projects and activities that minimize flooding. Then I'll take any additional questions.
Yeah, please.
Good job.
As you can see, we have two components, again, water quality, which is really driving where we are now, and then just taking away the, the stormwater. Thank you for, for your patience on this, and you needed a year's work, and then even after that, because going forward, you'll have developers come to you and say, what's up? Why's it taking so long? And you can see why. Next, I wanna give some disclaimers. I'm not trying to shout "fire" in the theater and create panic, but at the same time, you need to be aware of this, because either you'll hear about it by having a friend or a neighbor go to Willett Hall, and you need to, to hear about it first and not through the grapevine. Second, this is not a briefing to council about the closing of Willett Hall, by no means. There's no hidden agenda here. But we have some, thank you, sir. Really. Willett Hall is established as an enterprise fund, and by that, it should operate as a business, where revenues equal expenditures. And they don't. We've got some operational and big capital needs that face us, and we need to make you aware of those. And that's the purpose of this briefing, is to make you aware of those, and so that you hear it from us and hear about the order of magnitude. When I heard about it, I asked them to get a structural engineer to come in, and so to give this presentation, Margaret and Dennis will come up and give you our report. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, vice baron members of council. Tonight, it was really a twofold piece of this. The first piece is gonna be kind of a show and tell, and like the manager said, we don't wanna scare anybody to death, but it's important that you actually see what we're dealing with at Willett Hall on a daily basis. The second piece of this is to deal with, give you an idea of what challenges we face from, from the capital expenditure piece. My partner and I are gonna work together on this, because she oversees the operation on a day-to-day basis, and I deal with the maintenance on the building on a day-to-day basis. So, we both have something to bring to the table. So, the first thing I think we need to do is just kinda outline the, the points that we wanna make tonight. And those points are, we'll talk about the history, and then we'll talk about the funding and the way Willett Hall is funded currently. We'll talk a little bit about the number of shows and the types of shows that we have there, and then we'll get into the, the current conditions of the facility and some of the capital needs that we need to begin to look at addressing as we move down the road. And the, the next piece, Mr. Stone's gonna take over and talk about the history of the, of the facility, and then go into some of the functions that are going on.
Okay, as everybody know, the Portsmouth veterans, is Willett Hall's been around a long time, and it pretty much started as an auditorium in, in 1955. It was renovated by the city in, of course, 1986, and then, of course, the school closed in '05, but the auditorium remained open, and now the school was torn down and is extending as a freestanding facility. Okay, in terms of the funding, like Mr., city manager Mr. Rowe mentioned, that it is an enterprise fund, and basically, the revenues equal the expenditures, and right now, Willett Hall does operate as a deficit. The facility maintenance and all the operations are not fully funded from the facility revenue. Okay, basically, we do a lot of shows. I'm gonna just give you a little rundown of some of the things, type of things that we have. We do, of course, plays, we do R&B, jazz, gospel, comedy, hip-hop, those types of shows, dance recitals, dance competitions, children's plays, children's shows. We have even had memorial services. We do some contemporary arts programs through the Portsmouth Community Concerts. And we average pretty much about 50 shows, and we kinda did, did a, a basic average, about 50 shows a year. And typically, what happens with that, we sell about an average, and an average basically is, some shows we may sell 400 tickets, the next show we may sell 200, the next show we may have to cancel because of lack of sales. So, and of course, the average cost for these tickets range between $25 and $30. So, those are some of the, just give you a little highlights of some of the things that we have there, but then basically, some of the, the financial parts in terms of the tickets that were sold. And Willett Hall does seat about 2,000, for those that did not know.
How much, how much are we losing on a yearly basis? Just high level?
You got that. Brandon has that number.
How much?
For next year, it's about 100,000.
About 100,000?
He has that.
Without capital, though, that's just operating.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, the Parks and Recreation staff are doing as much as they possibly can with the facility that they have, and we, we've talked about this, and we said, we, we gotta increase attendance, we gotta have larger shows. And when we started looking at having larger shows, we had to look at the facility and what the facility provides. And first of all, there's no ADA access to the balcony and the President's Lounge, and the President's Lounge is the only open area for meeting space and that sort of thing. The additional space for concessions, if you look over at the Tellers, where, where they have large concerts and they have sold-out crowds, the concessions are on both sides. They, they provide that service, and that's part of what brings the, the concert goer to, to the venue. We don't have that space in, in Willett Hall. There's no catering facilities, and if you're gonna bring in a national act or, or a well, a well-known name, then they're gonna expect to have food all day long, and we just don't have those facilities at, at Willett Hall. And there's inadequate dressing rooms. I'm sure most of you have seen the dressing rooms, they're just old-school tile, and when you bring in an entertainer, they, they feel like, you know, they're special and they need something special in their dressing room, and we just can't provide that. There's a need for, there's a need for additional rehearsal space. And if you remember, when we tore down the school, there was a section in the back, which was a porch, and we saved that specifically for this purpose, but there was never any money appropriated to refurbish that and make it usable space. So, it's not heated, it's not air-conditioned, the windows are still in the, the old-school windows, the tile's still there. So, none of that's, even though the space is there, it's not usable. There's no retail space for, for merchandising, and, and that is a big ticket for a, a act that would come in that could fill that hall up. They want a place to lay out their t-shirts and their CDs and all the other things that go along with that. There's outdated exterior parking, lot lights, and exterior lighting design. Now, we're in the process of redoing some lighting in the parking lot, but the exterior lighting of the building kinda keeps people away, they don't feel comfortable. Even when all the lights are on, the store and staff gets complaints about inadequate lighting. So, we're trying to address some of that, but, but not on the scale that we need to, because it's just such a, a high-dollar item. because it's just such a, a high-dollar item. And the last piece is, really affects large shows, large plays, is the outdated house lighting, the stage lighting and the rigging system. We can't currently dim the house lights because the dimmer rack is so old. We'd have to do a complete replacement of the electrical system in order to get dimmer switches that would, do what they're supposed to do. The curtain doesn't operate properly. Sometimes you have to pull it open and pull it closed, and, and large acts just don't want to do that. So when we're dealing with trying to move forward and, and fill the, fill the hall, it's tough to do that under the circumstances that we have. Now, the building conditions have gotten pretty severe. And we're going to have a show and tell. I feel like back in elementary school, I brought a bag full of stuff to show you. But there's so many things that we want to bring to your attention tonight. First of all, there's a, there's a problem that's been at that school since 1955, when it was originally open. Water stands under the building. You can get all of the water out, and in, in a day, the water, there's four foot of water underneath of the building. And, and I've heard all kinds of stories that there was a stream there one time. We don't know. We've got some engineering work being done to try to figure out what it is. Mr. Khalil did the demolition of the project, and he can tell you some of the challenges we had. We had to pump water out from underneath of the building for a week before we could get underneath there and do some abatement work. So we're still trying to figure out if there's any way we can stop that. We put some pumps under the building, they run all the time, and they're still not, they're still not relieving the problem. And as, as a result of that, we've got severe termite damage. No, just one of them, you send one around. That's a piece of wood that my staff pulled out as they went over to try to do some patchwork. It's in a bag, it's sealed up. But that's how bad the termite damage is. And the, the termite damage has come because you can't treat the building because of all of the water running.
A lot to eat.
You can put, you can, you can have the building treated, but until you get rid of the water, you're not going to get rid of the termites because it dilutes the material.
Where did this come from?
I'll show you in just a second exactly where that piece came from, and then I'll send this around and show you exactly where this piece came from. There's outdated fire pump and sprinkler system. The fire pump will run, but because of the age of that, and I think the chief's here, he's, he's probably seen this, it doesn't have some of the features that's required on the newer fire pump systems. The, many of the seats are damaged, and the seats are not available anymore. Mrs. Thorne has done some research and trying to find if we can repair the ones that are there. And they're saying, no, we can't repair the ones that are there, they need to be replaced. The HVAC system is 27 years old. And if you know of your house, if you've got a 20-year HVAC system, it's pretty much done its job. And this, you'll see a picture of this in just a few minutes. The roof is 22-year-old, 22-years-old, and it's also in need of replacement. So we've got a lot of issues going on at the same time here. Now, this is a picture under the building where, it's, it's on the east side of the building, and it's a hole that goes under, this is the crawl space, and this is the electrical lines that are pulled up over the side. But all of this is water that you see there. And, and there's pumps within, I'd say, within 15 feet of where we are, there's a pump running all the time. And that's, that's what we have.
Is that standing water consistent then, it's throughout the whole bottom or just on the east?
Pretty much. There are some areas under there that are dry, and the reason they're dry is because the elevation is higher. But for the most part, yes, it is. And the way it's structured, there's approximately 10 by 20 blocks underneath of the building, and you can't get to some of those blocks because of the way the building is built. But everywhere we can see, in this general area and across the back of the building, yes, it is. Now, in the front of the building, there's a basement, crawl space-type area, but there's enough dirt in there that it's up above the water level. This is a picture of the wall on the west side from the inside of, of this, of the auditorium. It would be stage left, I believe it is. This is where the termites have eaten through the panhandle, and this is just paper-thin pieces. And my staff has gone over from time to time and tried to seal that up, taken it out, put tape, and done some work over there that's, that's, that's got us through. But it's getting to the point where we can't do anything else to dress this up.
Somebody sitting in this chair right here will look up to the right, and it'll look like contact paper. For some reason, the termites haven't eaten through that final layer on the outside, but what's behind that final layer is gone. And that's why you've got this bubbling effect here. And that's what you see when you sit down in your seat, if you're sitting that close to the wall.
Now, this is behind the wall. We took a piece of this panhandle off. Now, the piece of wood that we just circulated around is a piece from in here, from inside of the wall, that actually supports that panhandle. And we've had some concerns, and we brought in a structural engineer to look at this, not only as, as under the stage, but also up in the walls. We've had a structural engineer do an analysis and given us an idea of what it's going to cost us to fix these, these damaged areas. This is, all of you are familiar, if you've been in Willett Hall, when you go up on stage right and stage left, there is a circular piece of wood that's, it's kind of a handrail, so to speak. This is the same type of damage, the termite damage that's on the inside. If you go one more slide, it's got a picture of where we had to take it out and replace it. This is that piece of rounded material. The termites are in the backside of it to the point where it just came off. So we've had to square that off. We just cut it off straight and then put a faceboard on the backside of it. This is a picture of the joist system from underneath of the stage. There's a hidden door, a trapdoor, basement underneath of the, of the stage. And this is termite tracks down this beam. That particular beam has got to be replaced according to the structural engineer that looked at it. This is the orchestra pit where the brass railing goes across the top. This is termite damage. All of these areas are where it's starting to get paper-thin. But that whole entire orchestra pit area is the same way, and it's getting worse. This is just a picture of, one picture of the seat. There's all kinds of problems with the seats. This is just a coin seat, but some of the seats don't open and close properly, so I'm going to have torn backs. But we estimated about 40 seats that look like this. And there's other problems other than those 40, but we have about 40 with tears at the bottom, just like this.
And just to add, we did research trying to upholster those. They don't make the fabric anymore. And the actual seat itself is just kind of a discontinued chair. So you'd have to replace the entire seat.
This is a picture of the fire pump that's in the basement. Again, it, it does run, it feeds water to the, to the sprinkler system, but it will not pass inspection because it doesn't have the features to tie into our new fire alarm system. And we've worked with the Fire Marshal's Office on this for the last year or so, anyway. This is a picture of, there's actually three of these units. This is only one. There's two, two other units that are actually larger than that. This is the HVAC units that are on the roof, the air-cool condensing units, and they really, we struggle with those every summer. The equipment is so old that we can't guarantee that it's going to stay up for this length of a show. We almost have somebody on staff waiting for a problem to arise because once somebody's paid for that ticket, they certainly don't want to sit in that hall and be worn. Now, we, we've started looking at repair estimates, and, and to resolve the groundwater issue, the first thing we've got to do is figure out how to do that. And we haven't had anybody that's been able to come to us with a, a valid solution to that problem. We're working on that, we're working with Youssef Khalil a little bit.
Where do we think the water's coming from?
It's groundwater.
Groundwater, yeah. I mean, it's just...
The water table is extremely high there.
No matter what your pump is, steady coming up?
It's constantly coming up. Ideally, what you would have is that the elevation...
Building on a bad site?
Excuse me?
Building on a bad site?
It's built on piles in 1955. And there's a good chance, visualize going from High Street down Harford Street, and you go past the traffic circle, and right there to the left, there's a finger of a creek that comes up.
Think there was a stream that came through?
Exactly. Because you can then look to the east, and you'll see the depression where it cuts across the old-school property and heads off towards the Willett Hall. Dr. Robert W. Allen was the school principal when I was in high school, and he complained about the moisture then. And it was a problem in those days. So there's a good chance that, that it might be groundwater coming from a, from a old stream.
What's the answer there? Drive well point somewhere and just keep pumping away?
We've had that discussion, but if you have well points, the pump's got to run all the time, and, and you've got to have large enough well points.
Sounds like the pump's running all the time now, right?
Well, the, the smaller pumps are, but I'm talking, to have a well, well points that would do this, it would be a, it would be a very, very large project. I would introduce Cheryl Hawkins is, is on my staff. She's a manager of property projects. She's been working with, with our staff on this quite, quite often. She was over, and I think she could tell you that there was four feet of water under the building when we took these pictures. And there's...
Cheryl, stand up. Everybody needs to note this.
She's a key member of our property management staff, and, and her and her, and the members of properties management have been fighting this battle for, for a long time. This is termite season. They began to swarm. And we deal with the swarming because we can't deal with what's in the ground.
Cheryl's one of my heroes, if I may digress. She served our country. Would you tell them what you did for, for our country?
For my first 20 years, I was a bio-environmental engineering tech, seven years active duty in the West Reserve. And the last five years, I was a first sergeant for a medical group and for an airport squadron.
Isn't that cool? We have great people.
Excellent experience. Excellent.
I have a question. Has the city condemned this building?
No, sir.
Because it sounds like you all are telling us that it is condemned. But also, I want to add something to that. That was just a little bit of my dry humor. But I do want to know and understand, that could be a, a great spot for what that building is supposed to serve as. And to me, it might seem like it's not to our advantage to try to, try to fix all of these problems. It might be more advantageous to build something new. But we need a venue like that, I think, in Portsmouth to help enhance community activity and bringing plays and symphonies in an enclosed structure other than just having Intellus downtown.
Which would have to basically, and I shared this in the budget presentation, would have to be, we're having to compete now with the Sandler Centers and the Constant and all those. So it would have to be absolutely right. Something that's going to really draw the people and, in terms of wanting to buy the tickets. And, and a venue that we can really sell, absolutely.
I want to just say to you, though, until we deal with this, anything else is a waste of money. Because this termite treatment, and we've had termite treatment estimates up to $80,000 with no guarantee that they would be able to resolve the problem. But until we deal with this and we, and deal, and get this problem resolved, we're throwing good money away. So I think the first piece that we really need to figure out, if there is a way to, to deal with that groundwater. And then if, if there is, the termite treatment would be 25,000. We've got that estimate today. We've had estimates as high as 80. We've got a $25,000 estimate today. The, the repair for the termite damage, we've got an estimate from McPherson and Associates who did the structural analysis, is 191,000. The fire pump replacement is 55,000. That, that estimate is about a year old now. And the HVAC replacement is 325,000. The replacement of the auditorium seating, and, and we just got this price today. We haven't really had, we, we got it actually just before we came into this meeting. So we need to look at that a little closer. But it was $200 per seat, and that's $400,000 for replacement of all of the seats. Replacing the roof system, $250,000. And that roof is, is in need of replacement.
Margaret, will you tell them about?
Yes, we went over on Monday and took some pictures. Everybody's familiar with Willett Hall. When you're on the stage, you've got the high ceiling and everything, there's about three holes, probably about that big. So there is a show scheduled there on Thursday. If it rains Thursday, guess what? The water's coming in on the stage. And it's not, it's not a small amount. When it comes in, it's almost like somebody, you know how kids stand and pour water? It's almost, that's just how, how large the holes are. And we had some pictures, but we just couldn't get them clear enough. But there's about three of them on the right side. So anybody on this side, whenever it is raining, that water is going to come. So we're just going to pray that she does have a show this weekend, that there is no rain, because otherwise, rain is going to come in on the stage. So that was another thing.
And how much revenue did this generate?
The, the show for this weekend?
At Willett Hall?
Oh, well, we have, I mean, we, we're going to, we have, Brandon has the, the whole dynamics in terms of the revenue port. We were just trying to give you all some, some specifics of what we were dealing with, some of the challenges. But, but he does have a, some information on that if you all want to, if he wants to share that too.
If we, if we add up all of these, these estimates, it's, we're talking about 1.2 million. But I do want to, I want to go back and say to you that 1.2 million repairs these problems, but we still have a venue that lacks concession space, it lacks merchandising space. So we need to address all of that as, as one, as one time.
Have you all seen this?
We need a new building.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Have you all looked at replacement costs?
Not recently. We looked at it back in 2006 and '07. So we can do that. But again, we wanted to make sure that you're aware of these before you heard it through the grapevine because it's no longer concealed damage, it is damage that you can see with your liability.
I was just looking at if someone would get hurt or something would happen. At what stage are we as far as saying that the building is still safe?
And that's our concern, too. And that's why we asked McPherson to come in and take a look at that. And so we're evaluating his, his report, literally.
Well, it seems, seems like to me the real problem is the conditions that cause the, you know, the standing water.
That's right.
That's going to continue to attract termites, wood rot, mold.
And there is, and there is, the mold is very strong. And I was sharing with Mr. Rowe, even when I was in there, I'm sorry, even when I was in there on, yesterday, I had a little concerns about the mold because of some health issues myself. So I was kind of going through the building, and it is very strong, and it doesn't go. I mean, and behind the, where he showed you where the water is, where the orchestra is, behind that, that area does leak as well. So we've got a whole lot of issues, and I think, I'm just sure the mold is everywhere. But it does have a very strong smell of mold.
So should we be having anything in that?
I don't think so.
Let us evaluate that for you. We're not here to say it's condemned yet.
After evaluation, bring back demolition costs.
That's right. With standing water, would anybody go in there?
If it's water, there's mold.
Mold, that's right.
Next item are the items that are additional. We have received a letter from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Once council decided that it was going to join the plaintiffs in supporting their suit and take the position against the tolls and the fact that the contract is unconstitutional, we made the decision not to let VDOT on, to have access to our parcels. And they needed to get on the parcels that they had planned to purchase from, from us, from the city. And so they went ahead and filed the Quick Take Papers for three of those five parcels, and George can brief you on what that means.
Okay. Mayor, members of council, as I advised you when council was considering taking this action, VDOT always has this right of, under the state code for road projects, which this is, to, to file, basically to deposit what they estimate to be the value of the property with the circuit court, and then they, they acquire title to the property. We can go back later on and dispute whether the value that they deposited was correct, but they can take immediate, they can acquire immediate title to the property. That's what they've chosen to do. They're within their rights under the state code. There's really nothing you can do about it except contest value later on. This, but, but council's action in, in not going along with it did continue to send a clear signal that it was not going to cooperate with, with this project because that's, that as long as the toll issue remains unresolved. So that's it as far as, as far as this letter is concerned. They've sent us, this is the notice that they, they've sent us, and they're proceeding, and they said, regardless of having to take this action, they're willing to work with the city in the future with respect to other issues. And they just needed to take this action in order to keep the project, their portion of the project on, on schedule. of the project on, on schedule.
Yeah, we expected this.
We expected it.
We fired a shot and they just fired back.
Back and it's all, yeah.
And the next item relates to the railroad museum, which you can see out the window here. You have an agreement with the museum and what the museum would like to do is offer Chick-fil-A sandwiches. And we would like to get your feeling on that. We have no problems with it as long as it meets all the codes, that's city codes and health codes. So we wanted to bring this to you because they want to get this underway and get a feel for whether or not you had any problems with it under those conditions. If you don't, then we'll bring back a formal amendment to the agreement that you have with the museums. George, you wanna-
Actually, what they, they are proposing to have a walk-up facility here for lunch only and there will be no food preparation on the, on the premises. So basically it's as if you, council used to have, I think the planning commission used to do Chick-fil-A a long time ago, maybe council, and they'd bring them in in coolers. And that's what, that's what they would do. And maybe they'll have something to heat up the sam, keep the sandwiches warm, but that would be it. The, right now, the museum is there under a lease from the city and the lease is very restrictive in terms of the uses that are permitted. And it's limited to storage, restoration and maintenance of railroad cars and associated equipment, memorabilia and items reflecting railroad heritage. And it's to be a permanent exhibit that's open to viewing by the public. There's no, there are no provisions in there for ancillary uses or for guest, for guest, not guest, for gift shops or restaurants. So my, in reading this, it was written very restrictively, so we, we would need to, to modify the agreement, have an amendment. And basically what I would propose is that if council doesn't have an objection to the activity, that we continue to vet it through the codes process. And if they meet all the codes, all the code requirements, then the manager basically go ahead and, and execute an amendment to this agreement. That would be carrying out council's wishes. There's no need for it to go back, to come back to council for formal action unless you, unless you desire, but it would just be to add simply that limited use to the, to these uses I've, I've explained to you.
That probably sounds like the best course.
Ms. Moody?
I know we're looking at mobile food vendors. How, this is an ancillary type of food operation where they obviously comes in on a vehicle, they carry it inside. Will that be incorporated with, I guess what we're looking into as far as-
The mobile trucks.
Mobile trucks going around to the different facilities?
That's, that's a good question and it probably should.
And we get our food that way, as we know.
Right. And that's one of the things that we're looking at, as you know, as you just said. So we'll, we'll vet that too.
This might be an opportunity to address both of them, you know, under one piece of legislation.
This is similar to the way I think Brutus started a number of years ago when they came to city hall with baskets of pre, of pre-prepared sandwiches and then walked through city halls, basically selling them until they got rid of them. They would have, they, this is not gonna be on an order basis. They would have to estimate how many they're gonna need on a daily basis and depend on people walking down there or driving back there. They're, they're using it mainly to attract, as an attraction for people to come down and maybe view the museum while, while they're there. So it may work, it may not work.
Enjoy the grass when the better weather.
So continue to work this?
Yeah. I think we need to work with them as much as possible to try to accommodate what they're trying to do there.
Where they gonna get their Chick-fil-A sandwiches from?
Unfortunately, I think it's gonna-
I swear they putting a new one up.
All right. We have a, a letter that came today that relates to our recycling program. Since we last talked with you, it's by our understanding, we picked up this intelligence that the local consortium of private waste companies hired a lobbyist and you may have gotten a call from a lobbyist challenging our numbers and challenging our logic. Our numbers have been very well scrubbed and they're very conservative, as you know. And I, I stand by our numbers and I stand by the, the logic. The logic is sound and the numbers are very, very conservative. Ultimately, what the waste industry wants to do is take over our total collection, not just recycling, but our door-to-door weekly trash pickup. We have a philosophy that we express almost daily. We, we will not take on those things that we're not good at doing. But those things that we're really good, we're gonna continue to be good and not only good, but outstanding. And, and door-to-door solid waste pickup, what's called the MSW, the municipal solid waste, is something that we're really good at and you know that. We have all sorts of compliments that come, not only to us, but to our, our drivers. I mean, we, we're really good at, at doing this. George received a letter today from an attorney who represents the waste business in Virginia and we wanted to share that with you and George can offer his initial comments to the letter.
Mayor, members of council, I did, I received this letter after lunch today. I spent a little time looking at the code sections that, that are cited in there. Basically, the attorney who sent this out represents or, or has been requested by the Virginia Waste Industry Association to ask council for more time to review the proposal that the manager has presented. And they basically claim, they don't say that what the proposal is, is illegal or imprudent or, but they just think that, that more time needs to be allocated. They raised the specter that we might be supplanting other waste haulers and that's equating the, the recycling operation that, that current operators have in the city with, with waste haulers. And I, I'm not sure that's a, I'm not sure that's a good comparison. I've looked at, I've looked at what they have in here and every time I looked at the code and looked at the letter, I was less impressed with the letter. I'm not saying that, that definitively there's nothing to it. He's requested that council delay action tonight on the appropriation. My feeling is let's, council go ahead and appropriate the money. We'll continue to look. I'll look more at this and, and if it's, if it's, if I don't see a problem with it, then, then the manager and, and the staff can continue without delay in implementing this. And I think that's probably gonna be my ultimate recommendation, but I don't see any reason to delay for, for a couple of weeks in appropriation. It's, we're not delaying, we would have to come back before we could start implementing if I decided, determined tomorrow that, that we needed, that we could go forward with it. So rather you appropriate it, then what the manager will decide whether it's, whether it's, the timing is correct to, to proceed.
It refers to other vendors providing that service. Are there indeed people enforcement providing?
There is a, there's, there's at least one company providing curbside pickup of recyclables and you have, and the residents pay a fee for that.
Remember what the goal is. They wanted to buy us out. They wanna do the whole thing, not only recycling, but MSW. Our recommendation is that you adopt the order. All right, last item, real quick is Sherri's gonna give you a briefing on the governor's amendment to the transportation. She has bill, she has talking points.
Yes, good evening, mayor. Right, as mayor, chair, members of council, city manager's staff. Governor signed off on all of the bills and the budget bills as of midnight last night. So I'm just gonna quickly talk about the House Bill 2013 with the transportation bill. Keep talking, we'll listen. Okay. All right, I'm sorry. But what he did really quickly is that he just kinda tweaked the transportation bill and some of the things that he tweaked it was he reduced, proposing a vehicle titling tax and it was increased at 4.3%. He reduced it to 4.15%. He reduced the alternative fuels vehicle annual fee. General Assembly had passed it at 100, he reduced it down to $64. He corrected-
64?
Good number. Corrected and reduced the rate of taxation for regional congestion relief fund, which is your recidation fees, which initially in the bill was just for Northern Virginia. What he did with the planning districts, regional pieces in Northern Virginia, New Hampton Roads Planning District, because of the opinion of Attorney General Cuccinelli that it was unconstitutional because it listed localities, what the governor has done is that he changed it to planning districts that meet certain criteria. And the criteria would be populations in planning districts that are 1.5 million or more, has at least 1.2 million registered motor vehicles within their district, has a total of transit ridership of at least 1.5 million across all transit systems within the planning district. So at this point in time, the only two districts that meet that criteria are Hampton Roads and Northern Virginia. However- However-
Cuccinelli's still coming out.
As the other planning districts grow in population, then they're able to also implement the same special taxes that the regional taxes, our regional areas are able to implement. So going back to the Regional Congestion Relief Fund, that was originally for just Northern Virginia. So now he changed it so that it's applicable to any planning district that has 2 million or more population, which is still Northern Virginia at this time. That's kind of the short and long of it. Any questions?
What is the, how do we finish out this session? What's next?
The next thing is that on the April the 3rd-
General summary reconvene.
April the 3rd, I'll be going up probably on the second for a VML meeting with the liaisons. April 3rd is the VDO session. We'll be up there in Richmond to track the, what the general assembly does. So we'll have a final by the fourth of whatever comes out of.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we got.
That's it? We got one bit of information here that I think I wanna defer to our liaison of ports to be able to present some good news to us and some of the actions that we're taking today. Councilwoman?
Two liaison reports, actually.
Get to the good news first.
First one and much, the most important thing that's happened in Portsmouth all day or about Portsmouth is that, and I brought you all a copy of the Virginia Pilot Report and I sent you all an email when it happened, that the Virginia Port Authority did vote this morning to cease and desist entertaining any further entities to buy the port and that they will immediately, their second resolution was to immediately go ahead and work with VIT in restructuring and continue operating the port in the same fashion. So we will retain our tax money from APM Terminal's lease, at least through the rest of that lease. So that's really big.
That's very good.
Much less important, but still part of my role here as far as the EDA liaison. The EDA did meet its regular monthly meeting, March the 19th. All the voting members of the authority were present. There was a presentation made by Monique McWhite of the ODU Small Business Gateway Center and Erica O. Small Cisco of the New Women's Small Business Center at ODU. And these ladies were there to explain services that they provide to regional small businesses, particularly women, minority and veteran-owned businesses located in Portsmouth. They said that they serve about 60 Portsmouth businesses in the last 18 months, helping them with registration, certification, pricing, RFPs and social media. They were basically there to, to refresh the EDA on what they do, what they can do and sort of do a little bit of a dog and pony show because evidently a year ago, the EDA stopped funding them $25,000 a year because they could not get information from them on what businesses in Portsmouth they were supporting. And so a $25,000 annual contribution was eliminated. So these are two new gals who are with these organizations at ODU. So they came to give some information. The EDA asked them to thank them for their presentation and said, we'll think about you again when you actually give us some statistics about the Portsmouth building, businesses that you're helping. And they promised to bring those statistics back by the April meeting. There was a closed session for consultation on the contracts with Lucas Hospitality at Victory Village, Royal Farms, Craigor and Grass EG Development, which are all on our agenda tonight. And of course, the resolution was passed by the EDA to support the $50,000 for, against the tolls, which we talked about last night. And that's it.
Okay. Good job. One quick thing, you also received something in the mail from the manager about the change in the MSA from the PDC. We were notified that Surrey County has been pulled out and we've included in North Carolina, Gates County. And the only other piece is there was quite a bit of discussion about this newfound fortune that we're gonna get from this transportation bill and we kept saying we were gonna defer to the retreat, but I think we talked about in Iowa-
Yes, sir.
About deferring to the retreat, but we kept talking about it. So we're gonna have a retreat at the PDC and the TPO to make sure we address these and see how we can logically put something together, some type of structure, so we can all have something to adhere to. But there was quite a bit of comments about whether we're gonna widen I-64 to 75 mile stretch from here all the way up to 295 and some of the challenges we have with either the right-of-way issues with widening it versus going and, and, and taking up some of the medium strip areas. So stay tuned to that. That's gonna be heated. Again, I think in a region like Iowa, we need to be mindful of what our objectives are with trying to get people in and out of the region as well as getting them around within the region. And depending on where you put that priority would determine whether or not you think we should be widening 64 or doing something else. So with quite a bit of discussion on that, but hopefully we'll be able to come to some kind of conclusion like we did with the prioritization of all the other things there. But other than that, again, this was big news today with the port and hopefully it has sent a signal to the Commonwealth here, the interest that's out there with the ports and what the potential, this port has to be the number one port, I think, on the eastern seaboard. And I think we've got a lot of opportunities to be able to prove that. And I think the challenge with VIT and VPA is to get an organization and a structure that can actually capitalize on that as well as bringing more businesses and other things to this region. I think it's all there and I think they made a, a, a wise decision today. Any other reports?
Yes, sir. I have two items that I want to make you all aware of that I placed in front of you before the meeting. The first is the revised, revised resolution regarding the $50,000 for the no tolls, for the litigation, which is item 13-140. The second item that I placed in front of you was the motion for item 13-141, scheduling the public hearing to issue the-
The bond.
Just wanted to let you know you're all-
Okay, very good. All right, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.